We'll call this meeting with Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome all those who are viewing the meeting on G-10 television, all those who are in attendance tonight, even though it's very few people in attendance tonight. We're going to start the meeting by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Mike Bazzaro, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I take it we follow the palls as always at this time to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day that you've blessed us with, and to thank you for all your blessings upon us individually and upon us corporately as the city of Jacksonville. We pray this evening for civility, civility toward each other, even when we hold different views. We pray for healing, healing in a time of a virus that each of us fears, but we pray that your healing power would be upon us as individuals and upon our community. We pray for our future, even though our future, our tomorrows are not promised, we pray that our tomorrows will be used in service to you and to each other. We pray for our military, for our service members serving us here and around the world, for their safety and for their anxious families. And as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and your direction would guide and lead them. We ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I approve.
Any...
Mr. Mayor, number six.
I'm sorry. Yes, we do want to move number six out of the consent items into non-consent. That's number six.
Still the same motion.
Okay. All right. No discussion here, none at all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. We have our first section of public comment for the evening, and no one has signed up, and I don't think anybody's come in that wishes to speak at public comment. So we'll go on to the adoption of the minutes and consent items, and these minutes are from the August 18th, 2020 regular meeting. If we could get one motion for both, that'd be acceptable.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second, consider. Motion, a second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. So we're going to start with item number six.
For clarification, did that motion include the adoption of the consent items?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll go with number six, and this is a resolution to adopt the Southeastern North Carolina Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Ryan, you're going to present this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, we are asking the mayor and council to approve the resolution tonight, but we wanted to take this opportunity to brief council very quickly on a couple of issues. Basically, Senate Bill 200 requires that all local governments have a hazard plan to receive funds, specifically the three items listed before you, as you all are aware of, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the buyout, that is the program we're using for the properties on Shoreline Drive right now. So we have to have this plan in order to receive those assistance dollars. In 2016, the counties to our south, FEMA approved them, which is Brunswick, Hanover, and Pender, to create a regional plan, which is known as the Southeastern North Carolina Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. In 2019, Onze County basically was endorsed to and wanted to be included in that plan. And as the mayor and council may remember, the mayor sent a letter in August of 2019 basically saying it is our intent to join along. Well, the reason why we're here tonight is because that... Well, I'll give you an update on the plan, and then I'll tell you the third reason why we wanted to kind of brief you tonight on this. That draft plan is currently, has been prepared by ESP Associates. The draft plan was made available for the jurisdictions to review back in August. We have now sent our comments to the consultant, which will be incorporated into those plans. That plan has been reviewed by multiple staff, myself, deputy, I mean, Mr. Massey, Sean Hayes, Chief Tallman, we've all kind of reviewed that plan and provided feedback. That will be backed for city council's approval at a later date, but the biggest thing is this ties into the community rating system, the CRS, as we call it, as it relates to flood insurance savings. Well, that letter wasn't adequate enough during our June 2020 CRS cycle. We have an audit basically every five years. So we're losing points by not having the resolution adopted, so that's why we're here before you tonight. We did find out, as it relates to the CRS program, each year that basically we, city staff performs multiple things. We send flyers out to people in the repetitive loss areas, mailers, we have information on our webpage, we keep up with elevation certificates during the building permit process, Public Services does things with stormwater and drainage maintenance, as Wally briefed, I think, the council on back in August. And one of those activities where we receive points, and points means a better CRS rating, and that means better flood insurance premiums for our citizens, one of those things, as I mentioned before, is Activity 510 as it relates to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The letter they told us was not sufficient, which is why we're asking for the resolution tonight, because that resolution will gain the city 155 points. That's a critical number, because back in 2015, which is under an old manual, the city of Jacksonville was elevated from an eight to a seven. That's a good thing, because we had 1,539 points. Well, as you can imagine, 155-point loss is going to drop us down to a different category. Unfortunately, something that the city of Jacksonville couldn't control is the county growth adjustment. It dropped from a 1.22 to a 1.07. That's a multiplying factor. So regardless of what we do, or what we've done over years past, we are expecting our CRS grade to drop to a nine. With this resolution, with that 155 points, we should be in the eight category, so we'll only drop from a seven to an eight. And what that means is, for people with flood insurance, I'm not talking about your normal homeowners, but your flood insurance, for those that have flood insurance policies, the table here on the right, you'll see that the CRS rating equates to percentages of the premium that you save, and there's two groups. You're either in the special flood hazard area, which is the column third of the four columns, and then for everybody else, you're in the final column. So right now, our citizens are saving 15% on their flood insurance premiums if they're in the special flood hazard area, and everybody else that has a voluntary flood insurance premium saves 5%. When we drop to an eight, that 15% saving is going to be dropped to a 10%. So we're also using this as an opportunity to kind of get the word out that we expect our rating to drop, once again, really outside of our control. We did the same thing with the CRS program we've done in years past, we just didn't have that community growth factor. That's really what caused the numbers to drop. So with where we are tonight, you know, we're expecting with this resolution to keep a, or not keep, but only drop one class rating, and that's why we're asking council to approve that resolution tonight. So those in the special flood hazard area, if we do drop to an eight, which we expect, they're going to lose unfortunately 5% reduction savings on their flood insurance premium. So with that being said, I just wanted to kind of explain why we were asking for the resolution when you previously had sent the letter, and also to kind of give council an update on we're expecting this CRS class to drop from a seven to an eight.
Yes. Ryan, can you explain, like, if we were a three, what kind of a community would that look like?
There would be a lot more programs that different city staff departments we would have to do. Like, right now, we send out letters annually to people in the repetitive loss areas to say, hey, look, you're in a flood-prone area, you may not have experienced flooding, but your neighbors have, so you may want to consider getting flood insurance. We put stuff in the library, we have to make sure our webpage is updated.
But these are proactive measures...
That's correct.
...in order to remove people from hazardous...
That's correct.
Or not remove them, but encourage less activity in those flood-prone areas to mitigate the...
And just also public outreach. But I mean, there's additional things the city could take on. I don't know that we could ever get to a three. I mean, that's something that we would have to talk with our CRS rep to find out what we could do to, you know, increase that.
So I guess what I'm asking is, if we do a different sort of plan, it could essentially lead to reduction of premiums?
Well, the...
And flood premiums for homeowners?
We have to participate, we have to participate in that Hazard Mitigation Plan already, but just not having the resolution is causing us to lose points. So we want those 155 points. Everything's based on, you know, points for activities that we do. And one of the activities the fire department is responsible for is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and because the plan was set to expire this year, but because we are incorporating with that regional plan, they've given us until 2021, and that letter wasn't adequate, so we need that resolution. But there may be other things that city staff could do as well that may help us climb that number.
Yes, that's my point. Obviously, we need to do this, but in doing that, are there other opportunities as we move along that we can do to maybe elevate the amount of reduction in premiums for, because those flood premiums are absorbent.
One of the things...
Very expensive.
One of the things, remember, the program is called the Hazard Mitigation Program. Anything that you do to mitigate a potential hazard, I'm not suggesting that the city would do this, but let me give you an example. We know of a number of structures that flooded. Many of those people, through Ryan's efforts and through Tracy Jackson's efforts, we contacted them, and we encouraged them to file for federal assistance to actually elevate their house. Very few, if any, have done that. If the city became proactive in actually providing funds to actually eliminate, or use the word mitigate, the hazard, so anything that we can do to encourage people, for example, there are several houses that John and I have talked about, actually going to the courthouse steps that are in foreclosure right now that flooded during Florence. If the city used stormwater funds or general funds to buy those houses out where we were mitigating or eliminating the hazard, so to move up the scale, what you have to do is activities that mitigate or eliminate. Now, you'd have to do that on a pretty large scale, because Ryan, my memory is foggy on this, but how many structures are actually in the flood zone?
Based on memory on the current maps, I think there's about 800, between 800 and 900 is what I remember, in the special flood hazard area, and that number was going to rise to 1,300 or 1,500.
In the future maps?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But the point being, those are the type things, I mean, I agree with Ryan, I think the most you could hope for is to get maybe to a six. But what we could do is follow this up with specific actions so that at least you'd have the information. I think you're going to find that the actions to really move you up past a 20% reduction are very expensive. But we will be happy to give you a list of those activities, so.
Either cause-wise or either just staff-wise, not having the staff available. Do you have examples of cities that might have, you know?
Certainly could look into that.
Other questions? Council, you've been asked to adopt the resolution.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the Hazarded Mitigation Plan. I was going to call it a hazmat plan, but a Hazarded Mitigation Plan.
Second. Motion, second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. That takes us to item number seven, and this is Unified Development Ordinance on lighting standards, and Ryan, I believe you're going to present this item also.
Thank you, Mayor. This item before you tonight is actually something that Dr. Woodruff and Mr. Massey and I, we've talked about, and we think that we're going to be bringing council a series of discussion points over the next year of just items that we want to explore, whether we want to make some changes, and lighting standards is one where we've actually made some changes, and I'll get into that in a moment, but we wanted to talk about the regulation goal, the reason why the Unified Development Ordinance incorporated lighting standards. And the first one is, we want to protect the training mission with the night flights the military base has with the aircraft. We want to make sure that we protect the training mission. We also want to build a quality community. We want our community to look good and, you know, scale back on light pollution and things like that. But we also want to allow the businesses to reasonably have secured lighting, and the ordinance provides the provision for them to have a secure lighting situation. It's just kind of a balance between lighting and also protecting the military mission and what we would like to see from a community standpoint. And the image in the bottom right, I think, kind of shows, you know, both from a sky situation as well as a light fixture situation. There's multiple light types, and some, you know, throw light every which way, including up into the air, and it's not effective, so it's kind of bad, because it creates light pollution, and it's just a waste of energy. And then if you look on the right, the best is where you focus that intensity to the ground, which is really the area that you're trying to illuminate. And, you know, like I said, we want to protect the public health and safety and welfare by allowing the sites to be illuminated, but also making sure that we balance that for potential off-site impacts. You know, you have residences in some cases to where we've had complaints over the years about the site lighting causing them not to be able to sleep at night, energy waste and light pollution. Here's an example of a situation that we've seen. This is a situation where no permits were pulled, so no standards being complied with, whether it be the electrical code or the zoning Unified Development Ordinance. And you can see that the glare is very strong. This is from a highway is where this photo was taken. This is what we're trying to keep from happening. And, you know, in 2014, prior to 2014, when the UDO was adopted, the UDO standards for lighting were beginning to be developed, and we actually brought it into the zoning ordinance back in 2013. Duke Energy and Jones Onzo provided assistance with all of the lighting standards that we have, both then and now. We want to make sure that we're not creating a standard that basically would be problematic for our co-ops and electric providers. But like I said, we added this to the ordinance in 2013, and then it was expanded with the UDO adoption in 2014. Interestingly enough, last year, we actually brought to city council some changes, which we feel have been beneficial, and I'll get into that a little bit further in just a moment. But at minimum, for lighting, a zoning permit before you add lighting or change lighting out, at minimum, a zoning permit is required. In some cases, for new installs, electrical permits are also required. So this is kind of an opportunity to kind of remind, whether it be our businesses or contractors in the community, if they see this footage on G-10, that, you know, we do have zoning permits that need to be obtained before installing these lights. And sometimes, and this is where sometimes the electricians may not, they may get confused is, they know that they don't have to have an electrical permit if they're licensed to do the work, but they may not be familiar with the zoning permit. So, like, well, I don't have to have a permit for doing this work, but you do have to have a zoning permit, so that's where we have to educate, and I'll get into that in a moment as well.
Can you explain why they would need a zoning permit to replace a light?
To make sure that it's not creating a non-conforming situation or making a non-conforming situation worse. So people that want to change to LEDs...
How would a parking lot be non-conforming? Parking lot light be non-conforming if it's already there?
They could be too tall, they could be too close to the property line and not meet the maximum levels at the property line, or they may not be dark-skY compliant.
But if the pole is already there and the light is there...
We'll get it, I'll get to that in just a moment, where that 2019 plan actually helped that issue, so I'll get to that in just one moment. So in 2019, we added this verbiage to help us deal with some reasonable applications for existing sites. What we discovered over enforcing the lighting standards since 2014 was that if you had an existing site with a pole that was 10 foot too tall, or it was already on the property line, there's nothing that they were going to be able to do, other than completely redo the lighting scenario or leave what they have, or what they had, without having some flexibility. And that's why we brought this to the mayor and council, and you all adopted those changes in 2019, and this has helped us tremendously for the existing sites where we have existing poles, is already too close to the property line. I cannot reasonably comply with the code. We added some provisions to allow us to have some flexibility, and it's worked well. So the one requirement where, that we also added back in 2019 was a U-rating of zero. So when you go to buy a light fixture, it's called a bug rating. We don't care about the B, well, I don't say we don't care, we don't have any restrictions on the B or the G standards, and that B is backlight, the G is glare. We want to make sure that that U standard, which is uplight, equals zero. And the idea behind that is that we want to make sure there's no light pollution into the sky, protect the military mission, and also make sure that they don't basically cause glaring problems on the highway. Safety is the concern there. And once again, we're trying to avoid situations like this.
Well, this is a picture taken at night, which any camera's going to have that glare, so I'm not sure that that's a good representation of that. But when you're talking about protecting the training mission, are you talking about in a flight overlay zone?
We're talking in the city as a whole. It's important in the flight zone, but it's also important citywide.
By whose standards?
Well, the training mission is not just the landing and takeoff. I mean, when you have the night goggles on, and certainly I'm not a pilot, Ron can probably do this better than I can, but when you have the night vision goggles on, you need to have a dark sky over the whole flight area. And so the intent is not, remember, the flight overlay has to do with height of structures. The dark skies is intended to be the entire community. So it was never the intent, when we established the dark skies requirement, that it only apply in the flight overlay, because flight overlay, again, is strictly the height of structures. But, you know, the, you know, once again, I agree with you, cameras can be misleading. I can tell you, I've been by this establishment when those lights were there. And again, in this particular instance, the gentleman got no permits, it was installed by someone other than an electrician, and he violated every code that we have regarding dark skies and regarding the amount of lumens that it puts out. And I don't think that it certainly doesn't represent a quality community, in my opinion. Now, everybody has an opinion, including that property owner. But, you know, again, this is what we're trying to regulate, but we're also trying to make sure, as Ryan said, that we have some reasonable accommodation. And some of the things that he's going to show you are some suggestions on what we've done and will do, because we do have some situations where some commercial structures, retail-type structures, need to retrofit their parking lots, and we've had some difficulty there, too. So...
And this is a situation where the light fixture is angled, and a light fixture that has a U-rating zero will not be angled upwards or at an upward angle at all. It's going to be parallel to the ground. And it's really as simple as, you know, the spec sheets on these lights. If you look, the two squares that I have with a black line around it is, the fixture on the left has a U-rating of four. That is not compliant, because it's not a zero. The fixture on the right has a U-rating zero. So when somebody comes with a light proposal, they provide us the cutoff sheets, and if it says, you know, U equals zero, then there's no issues, they can install that fixture, provided that they meet the property line standards. Now, if it's an existing site, we have flexibility that we did not have prior to 2019. So I think that some of the problems that we had in, prior to August of 2019, yes, we had problems, but I truly believe that the changes that the mayor and council adopted in August of 2019 have provided the flexibility for us to utilize for existing sites, unless they are going through a major renovation project or an expansion project where it triggers compliance completely. So easy, provide the information on the fixture that you're buying, you tell them you want a U-zero. It's easy. Provide that information to us, we see it's a U-zero, we can issue that permit as far as the fixture goes. So challenges, as we kind of mentioned, is if somebody goes out and hires somebody to do work and they don't obtain the necessary permits, and that's going to be a challenge, because then it becomes a zoning enforcement situation. In some cases, it's also a violation of the building electrical codes. So that's a challenge. So we would urge our businesses to make sure they obtain the necessary permits. They don't buy anything until they check to find out whether they could get that permit approved, and that it be a U-rated zero fixture. I believe on that hotel situation, talking to the electricians since those fixtures were installed, they're not U-equal-zero compliant fixtures, so they can't use those fixtures based on the current rules, because they are not U-zero. Photometric plans have caused us some problems, because Duke Energy, some people, Duke Energy provides the photometric plans, Jones Onzo does not, so then they are left to go to the lighting manufacturer, people like Cree, they provide, we provide them surveys that we have on file all the time, the lighting industry, they take that survey and they take the photometrics from their light fixture and they apply it to demonstrate that it meets the photometrics, the maximum illuminations at the property line. So there are some challenges there, because not everybody provides that, so sometimes I got to go through whoever the distributor is, where they're buying the lights from, and get them to help us get a photometric plan. And then, once again, in 2019, that amendment for the photometric, I mean, for the maximum foot candles, we have flexibility now, so there's an example where an existing light pole is literally at the property line. It doesn't matter what light bulb they put in that fixture, they are going to exceed the 2.5-foot candles maximum. So in that case, we had this conversation, we said, so that's the best it can be. They said, yeah, and we've basically allowed it to exceed that 2.5 standard, because literally, it's on the property line already, they would have to move that, rewire it, and that's not what we wanted to make them do with that 2019 amendment. So like I said, we believe that there are provisions that now help us that we didn't have prior to last year.
Let me ask you a question, just out of my curiosity. This is like on Western Boulevard, okay, but say you've got a lot of these businesses, business establishments that may be, you know, bordering on a residential area or whatever, did we ever get complaints from excessive lighting?
Yes, we have.
Into some of the neighborhoods?
We have, but it was prior to, it was prior to the UDO and lighting standards, so this is, I'm not going to say which site it was, but this is one that I know of, very familiar, I'm very familiar with. And basically, what we did was, we worked with Duke Energy, and we worked with the business center, and we said, look, you've added lights, we don't have lighting standards, but we're getting complaints. And what they did at the time was, they added some shielding to try to help eliminate the concerns and complaints from the joiners. Now, with our current lighting standards, it's going to be a little bit better, because we're going to have the maximum at the property line unless it's in existing development. And then we also have maximum height standards that we didn't have before, so now, I think our maximum height's 35 feet. Now, that doesn't do anything, if you've got an existing 50-foot pole, you can use that 50-foot pole. We're not going to make you take it down, because when you take it down, you completely, you'll start having dark spots in the parking lot area. And then to redo the whole lighting system would be very expensive to go in there and cut the asphalt up and run wires and new light poles, and that's not what we're proposing to do. So we've allowed these existing poles to remain higher with that 2019 amendment that council adopted.
So going back to that particular business with the photographs, if that upward lighting was shielded, would they be in compliance?
No, sir, it would have to be a U-rated zero fixture.
Of light.
It would have to be, so basically, from what I understand, per the electrician, that lighting fixture cannot be a U-equal-zero fixture, because it can move. We don't want to have a situation where they give us a light fixture that can move, because what happens is, they get it permitted here, and then six weeks later, it does like this, and now we got to go out with a zoning enforcement case.
But right now, they could actually lower these, right?
They could.
Are they?
So if we're going to talk about that particular example, apparently hotels are using a particular manufacturer for these lights, and they're installing these, or retrofitting these hotels with these same lights. And those lights have been approved in Raleigh, they've been approved in Wilmington, they've been approved in another city, I can't remember where, but they're not approved here. What would you say to that?
Well...
If it's the same light, it's because we have a dark sky...
That's correct.
And the others don't?
That's possible, yes.
And remember, it isn't about the lumens, it's about the flexibility... And remember, it isn't about the lumens, it's about the flexibility on how you angle the light.
So why can't we just tell them to turn them down and not up?
Well, we, we could make a code amendment that would go back against what we did in 2019. It makes it a little bit more, the, the enforcement challenges would be created, we certainly could do that. But then, what you have is you get it permitted, you get it turned on this way, and then a month later, or the new business owner comes along and does it like this. So we're constantly chasing that down. So, the easier approach would be, don't do work without permits, and make sure you buy-
Well, the permit issue, that's a whole separate issue. Everybody needs a permit that is required, that's a whole-
Deal with this issue during the permit process, so they have to provide this information to us. If they would have provided it, we would have told them, don't buy those lights.
But this particular owner did not even come in for a permit?
That's correct.
No. But, you know, let's, let's go back a second.
Yeah, that's a difference.
It's very easy, uh, to amend the code and to say, you can have that if you want it, but you gotta keep it down. The problem is, two years from now, we send out the code enforcement people, because some maintenance guy who changed the bulb turned it up like this. And then you, as council members, are gonna get complaints. Why is the zoning guy in here complaining to me because my light's turned the wrong way? It's not an issue of money. This light doesn't cost any more than this light. It's whether you want the light to be able to be rotated, or whether you want it to be fixed. So the best way to keep y'all from getting complaints, and certainly my office from getting complaints, is to set a standard and say, it isn't about lumens, it's about downlighting. You buy the right thing, you guys aren't gonna get, you guys, I'm sorry, that's, I don't like to use that term. The elected officials will not get complaints. What you're getting complaints from right now are two sources. Number one, when you take an existing building and retrofit it, and you have a parking lot with lights in it, most of those lights are ambient lights that go 360. Now, many, many times, I've had a property owner, I've had a car dealer, that you would recognize the name very quickly, who came to me and said, I just don't understand this, all I'm doing is changing out my light fixtures. Well, you know, what we want is instead of 360, we want it downlighting. That, that issue is always gonna be there. Every time we rehab a building, every time you go from a vacant use to a new use, or one use to another use, we're gonna have that. On the other hand, lighting of hotels, lighting of any business, because we're saying it's gotta be downlighting, it's gotta be zero. Zero, it, it isn't about lumens or brightness, it is about the angle. We can change the code, but I'm gonna tell you, I guarantee you that you will start getting complaints when we start sending code enforcement people out, because the light has angled back up.
And I, just to add to what Dr. Woodruff said, I know that prior to 2019, we had a lot of the retrofits, and before that amendment took place, we were having problems. And that's one of the main reasons why we asked council to give us flexibility, because that, the old verbiage was just too rigid for all of the existing applications. So I think some of those complaints, eh, they should have gone away at this point if they were to come in and do it today, because we have more flexibility than what we did prior to 2019.
I have a question. Do the U equals zero requirement extend throughout the county?
I have no idea, we can find out, do you know?
I do not know.
The others, Swansboro or Richlands, we don't know?
I'd have to check, but I do not know.
Even the county?
Even in the unincorporated areas, yeah.
No, I didn't, you say yes, they do?
No, I said, eh, eh, what it's, you know, should, I, I know what you're asking.
Right, I mean, that's what I wanted to know, is it, is, is the city limits?
I guess that's what the, 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 the issue that we're having as elected, it's difficult to talk to people that are spending a lot of money, they'd say, hey, I can do it in the county, but I can't do it in the city. I can do it in 10 other cities, we build them there all the time, we come here, and it's not applicable here. I'm not saying it is or it isn't. You know, the only concern and the reason for discussion tonight is, to make sure that if we're in the commercial corridors, that we're not in the weeds of the lumens. Dark sky, I can fully understand and appreciate why we'd want to protect that. But we've had some lumen issues, but you're saying that that's not applicable. But I know that we had some recently that we had to deal with.
For, for existing sites-
Actual lumens in commercial area.
For existing sites, we have flexibility that we did not have prior to 2019. So, I mean, I could see that being an issue prior to those changes. I, I, I won't, but I, I've not heard of anybody complaining about the standards with new sites. That doesn't mean that somebody doesn't have an issue, I just haven't heard of anything. So nobody's raised, what do you mean, I can only do 2.5?
So, get us any, you know, specifics, I will look into these and give you a report on what the issue was and how we can solve it.
Conversation about where we are and why we're there, and make sure that, you know, we're business-friendly as best as we can be, and not isolating, in the weeds, so to speak, on, on, on making it difficult for people to do business.
How many cases of this do we have in the city? One?
No, we've had several, I mean, it's, yeah, we've had several.
From a practical standpoint, I don't understand why you'd want to broadcast light up to start with, other than, unless you're advertising, uh, your location.
Well, a couple of them, a couple of them have been lumens, not the uplighting, it's the actual lumens.
I think our biggest concern is the uplighting.
You said lumens is not an issue, right?
Broadcasting in the neighborhoods or whatever, on, on the outskirts.
What Mr. Lazera said is, is part of the issue. Because other communities don't, don't have a training mission that they are concerned about. It is very true, uh, you'll hire an electrician from Raleigh, and you will say, here's what I want, and they'll say, no issue, no problem, we'll use this fixture. And they come, and in many cases, they install them. Only after they've been installed, do the people find out they shouldn't have gotten that one. You know, we all know that 99% of the problems in the world are because of communication, not because of bad intent. And I can tell you that I am very confident that no one, well, maybe one, but most of the people do not intentionally violate the code. They're doing their best, they're, they're trying to improve their commerce. But when you buy a fixture, and one of the things that is really giving us headache today, is what you can buy off the internet, and then install yourself. And you're buying these things without checking to find out, and this has to do with everything from signs, to message boards, to whatever. Uh, you know, people are buying things, because it's so easy now for us as individuals to buy, without having to go through a middle person. And when they do, and I'll give you one other example. We have a lady who tried to set up a beauty parlor, and she found some, uh, some, um, apparatus, I don't go to the beauty parlors, you can obviously tell, so I don't know the actual terms, but none of them had a U L rating on them. And she got them for a third of the price that she could have gotten them with a U L rating. Well, when the fire department went out there to inspect it with the building department, we said to the lady, we can't approve any of this. And she said, well, I can't return it, what do I do? You know, again, the, the thing, we know that y'all's goal, and our goal, is to be as business-friendly as possible. We can't always get there, but I will stress to you, that this management team understands, and we share that goal. So anytime that there is anyone, you know, I'm one phone call away, and y'all know that many times I talked to one-call-away people. Uh, was out with a lady yesterday, who had an issue, and we found a way to resolve it. But again, uh, Ron, did you want to add something?
You know, our, we've worked with the utility companies who provide street lighting, in some cases, they're the companies that are actually putting in the fixtures and that. And, and they offer fixtures that meet our requirements. You know, and the same thing, when we made, made those changes in last year, it was to accommodate the pole heights that they were using, and that. So, in other words, they offer packages, you just, you know, turnkey, and their packages meet our requirements. I think Ryan's last slide here, we're talking about, you know, it's a continuing thing we're trying to accomplish, by educating the public. You know, and, and we just want people to come talk to us, and we'll explain, you know, what our requirements are, and help them through the process, so we won't end up with these, you know, tales of woe.
Well, I'm encouraged by, by what Ryan indicated earlier, that you do work with people with lumen issues, which sort of, my pet peeve was the lumens. Uplighting, I have no issue with, we have to protect our training mission. You're really not trying to light up the sky anyways, you're trying to light up the safety of your, your patrons, or whatever product you have, if you're a car dealership or whatever. But as long as I think, I'm hearing what you're saying, is that you do work with people based on that.
Prior to 2019, we had a lot of people that were, that really, without removing the light poles and redoing the whole lighting, they had nowhere to go, and I imagine they were upset. But I think that that change, it gives us the flexibility we did not have before. I can tell you that there's one that I know of off the top of my head, that there's no way they're gonna be at 3.1, and we're ready to issue the permit. It's greater than 2.5, which is the maximum. I did pull up Fayetteville's code real quick, and they don't necessarily call it the dark sky standard, but I'll read what their, what their sentence says, illumination direction, in all districts, lighting shall be directed downward.
Who is this?
Fayetteville. That's just one quick example I just pulled up.
It's force protection, you know, trade admission protection. Mr. Ward had something.
Mr. Thomas brought up a good point, uh, I don't want us to, to, I don't want somebody to throw in our face that, uh, that the county doesn't require the uplighting, or Swansboro doesn't, because we have some businesses who have places of business here, as well as in the unincorporated areas, or in some of the other municipalities. If it's important to the military training, that we have uplight of zero, then it's, it's not only just important in Jacksonville, it's important in the rest of the county. And, and if we're, we don't even, we don't even, you told me you didn't even know what Swansboro, or, or the unincorporated areas, what Onze County requires. I think it behooves us to make sure that they're in compliance with what we're trying to do. I don't know what the mechanism you might use to do that, but we certainly need to, we don't want to get in a situation where somebody says, well, I'm gonna go, go do it out in the county, just because it's a whole lot easier to, and we get that anyway, but, but we don't want to do it over the lighting, you know, so-
For my memory, if my memory serves me correctly, at the CPG meetings, this has been a topic of conversation, and we have had representation there from the county, so they, they know the, they know the issue. Now, I don't know there's on a code.
Well, yeah, you're right, sir, that-
Important, if it's important, as, as we say it is, to the military mission, and we're trying to support it, then I would think the rest of the county would, would certainly try to support it. And we need to encourage some way, shape, or form them to, to bring their ordinances into compliance with ours, if they're not. If they are, great, but if they're not, then, not, I don't necessarily mean everything, but certainly the uplight is, is, sounds very critical.
Find that out very quickly for you.
All right, any other?
No, thank you.
Any questions? All right.
We leave, um, I would like, Ryan, while he's at the, at the table, to just give you a very quick update regarding our progress there on Shoreline, so, Ryan?
Yeah, there's actually two things, thank you for reminding us. So, just a quick update, we have acquired, uh, 90 A, B, C, and D shoreline. Uh, we are, we have three more buildings to go, so we, we bought one of the four buildings. We have the closing paperwork for the second one, we're just waiting to get the loan payoff information. So, we'll look to go ahead and acquire that second one as quickly as possible. It's our plan, because we had such a good price on the demolition, we'll probably have the contractor mobilize and go ahead and tear the first two down after we buy that second one, and then have them re-mobilize and come out, out a second time when we're able to acquire the third and fourth unit. Eh, every unit's kind of had its own issue, but we've worked through one, and then we think we've got the second one once we get that payoff done. And then the other two, there's an outstanding issue that's really not on the city side. There's a, there's a, one of the owners has got to work through their own situation, and they're both different. But they gotta work through those, and then we'll be able to go to closing. And, and the second thing-
Before you leave, that, we also have told you in the past that these units had to be torn down by September the 14th.
Correct.
Well, the good news is, we actually got an extension.
Till March.
So we now have until March to finish this process.
Well, great work. Thank you, and, um, it's, it's been a learning experience, and I'm sure frustrating, um, because they call it the, the expedited process, and here we are, two years later. So, um, unfortunately, you know, it's one of those things to where, I would have loved to have had it done a year ago, and I'm sure the mayor and council, and, and the residents, everybody, the, the homeowners, everybody would have loved to have had it done a year ago, but it's just one of those things to where, you, next time, hopefully there won't be a next time, but if there is, we'll be more prepared next time. And I don't know that it would have made a whole lot of difference, because this was really the first expedited process that the state offered. So this is a brand-new program.
Go down to-
All right, item two, one of the things that, um, we wanted to kind of let the mayor and council be aware of, is that we're in the process of creating, uh, some guidelines, if you will, that we can hand out to, um, restaurant owners, if they want to create a temporary outdoor seating area. So we're gonna have some information that we would be able to just hand out to anybody that may be interested, if they want to set up an area.
And we're not gonna go through the public hearing process, we're not gonna go through the code amendment, this is just simply gonna be, uh, what I'm gonna call managerial direction to the staff, and it's gonna be simple stuff like this. If you want outside dining, as long as it's nothing permanent, you can set up a tent, you can barricade several parking spaces, those type things, common sense stuff, that technically violate the code, but we are not going to enforce the code on those for a six-month period of time. We should be ready to issue those by Friday or Monday, Friday of this week or Monday. We have several restaurants who have asked, you know, can they expand their outside dining, or can they move to outside dining? Technically, they can't. Well, we're in different territory today. So managerial, unless you tell me now that you're opposed to me using some managerial latitude, that we're gonna set up these flexible standards, and we're gonna let people just come in, and we're gonna hand them a piece of paper and say, Mr. Thomas, if you want your hot dog stand, which by the way, serves excellent hot dogs, sir, if you want hot dogs, Mr. Lazera, if you want pizza outside, here's what you can do. And we're going to, we're going to not enforce whatever impact that outside dining has during this six-month period. Are you comfortable with that?
Any concerns about that? Are they good?
Okay. Just to clarify one thing, we won't require a zoning permit for that, we will provide them the guidelines, and also answer any questions they may have. But if somebody wants to, to, to install a tent, they will need to get a fire permit to make sure that there's not combustible material and things like that, which is standard anyhow, but, w- we won't be asking them to go through a zoning permit process, but we will provide them the information and provide all the assistance that we can.
On that outside seating, is, is it same requirement, I guess?
I'm sorry?
The outside seating is the same requirement?
As far as spacing?
Yes.
So it's the same thing, just-
What is the number now?
It's a 50% rule, I think.
Yeah, I think it's 50.
50% of your occupancy is that? You mean, as far as how many people you put outside? My understanding is 50% of your, of your normal load. But you're comfortable with that, we'll proceed. I know we're on a little bit of a time crunch, uh, let me see if we can get Kimberly and Herb to come in real quick.
How are you? We'll just do two at a time, you're fine. Safety in numbers. Awesome. Mayor and council, I want to thank you so much for having us today. As you can see, we've got four people that are gonna present different pieces of an initiative that we focused on. So, I'm gonna kick us off with talking about what we said we were gonna do, then James is gonna talk about what we did, and then finally, Susan and Melanie are gonna talk about the results of what we did. And today, we're gonna be talking about, um, the authorized transition of positions from a staffing agency to the city of Jacksonville. And I like to think of this as a huge success, and I think you will when we give you some of the results. But, we talk about the three E's, we want to make sure that we're effective, efficient, and economical, and this is one of those initiatives that hits all three. So we decided that, we had several positions in the city. Tonight, we're gonna talk about recreation, but we have several, um, temporary positions in the city that, do you have the clicker? I appreciate that, thank you. That, um, we were using agencies for, temporary agencies, and we wanted to bring those in-house. So, we can't, we had piloted this previously, and I know that you had heard about the initiative we had tried with the Parks Department, particularly for their season positions. And Dr. Woodruff had talked to you about how many, uh, positions we are, how many people we had to hire to fill a limited amount of positions, because they're high turnover positions. positions. So we decided we would tackle that. And we worked with Michael Laquory. We had an event where we put up a tent, and we brought people in, and we advertised it with social media. And we actually did an abbreviated application process, and did all of the backgrounds, drug screenings, brought people in. And I'm happy to say that that pilot was a huge success. We had 100% retention. So everyone we employed for that period of time stayed with us, which was unheard of. So we thought that was a great success, so we came to you. And we said, we would really like to look at that for many reasons, particularly the three Es, right? With Susan's group and Melanie's group in recreation. So we asked for, for some positions, and you all approved. You authorized 69 positions. Of those 69 positions, 48 were part-time, and 21 were what I would identify as seasonal positions. This was not an easy undertaking, as I'm sure you can imagine, because they are high turnover positions. We brought those onto city, onto city employment or city payroll. And we hoped, our goal in bringing those, those individuals onboard were, one, to make them city employees, but also reduce our liability. We were able to control the background investigations, the reference checks, the drug screenings, and being able to, you know, we were invested in making sure we hired the right people. So that, we felt like that would reduce our liability. And these are the slides we showed you when we asked for those authorized positions. We also knew that we were paying between 30 and 35% over the hourly wage for the service, right? For the temporary agency to provide that service. So we knew that there would be some cost savings for us. Also, we, we felt that HR, we were confident in HR based on the pilot that we would be able to do this. We were looking at increasing our retention rate, because the pilot had indicated that that would probably be the outcome. We also knew that having people that were a little bit more dependable and invested in the organization, because they worked for the city and not the temp agency, and we felt like we would get good quality individuals. So we came to the council and asked for those 69 authorized positions, and you agreed to that. And we want to thank you, and I think you will see, based on this presentation, that that was a very big success. James Treadwell, who is part of the HR team, has actually been leading this initiative for human resources. And James is going to go over some of the data that will help you understand how we, how we transitioned these 69 positions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you know, you authorized 48 part-time, non-benefited positions for the Recreation Department. And of those, we were able to hire 18, and that's primarily because we didn't fill all those positions. These are the positions that were not filled, and it's due to COVID-19. Through discussions with management, it didn't seem appropriate to hire folks that we could potentially have to lose in the long run due to COVID-19. So until programs come up and running with the Recreation Department, we won't even try to source for these particular positions. As far as citywide, when it comes to part-time employees and these temporary employees, we hired 13 recreation employees temporarily, but I was hoping that you guys would see that the temporary employment with the city is in full force. We've hired 41 positions since March, when you authorized positions, and we took that away from hiring from temporary agencies. We still have 12 onboard. Nine of them are working with parks. That should end around the end of October. A couple of them are working with facilities maintenance down on the pier that's taking place, and then also we have one in the Streets Department still. We haven't been able to fill all the part-time positions that we've been asked to fill, and part of those are, there's five of them that they need in Streets Department, because we did lose the ability to use inmates with helping us clean the ditches in the Streets Department. So we've been trying to get them six Streets temporary employees to work for about a six-month period. We're going to, we should bring on two more this week, and then we're working to source an additional three. As far as the parks, they've determined that they should be able to get through the rest of the season, and we most likely won't need those positions. Some of the hiring challenges that we ended up with, we really don't know how this thing would work in full scale until probably next year when we get through COVID, but we weren't able to do a hiring event like we did with the Parks Department. So we really don't know how successful or unsuccessful it would have been with the magnitude of positions that we were trying to fill. And obviously, with the CARES Act, it's created a lot of challenges for the monetary value that we're offering for these temporary positions. For a lot of folks, it's, it's a lot easier just to stay home. Some of the solutions that we came up with, with not being able to use a hiring event, was we utilized our applicant tracker that we currently have, and we usually use that to fill most positions. But we also worked with Media Services to get them to set some employee interest cards up on our, our website, that you can go to at www.jacksonvillenc.gov/parttime. And there's specific positions in there that you can generate interest. That's a continuing way to source, where we don't have a specific requisition out there, and we're looking for somebody. And we can always go back and see if folks are still interested in serving in those positions. Also, from time to time, when there's an immediate need, and we're not getting a whole lot of interest, of Ask Media Services sometimes to put it out on Facebook and Twitter, and we usually get results with that. Another thing that we've done is we've utilized QR codes. Media Services has helped us put things out throughout the city where we can put them up, when maybe parents are coming to pick up their children from before and after school programs, or they're attending athletic events, we're hoping to generate interest that way as well. Those are some of the solutions that we came up with without spending more money to generate interest.
Yeah, one more on that. 13. There we go.
Yeah, we did hire 13 temporary employees for the summer camps this year, and it was very successful. Some of them were transferred, but a lot of them were basically walk-in traffic with Melanie and her crew.
Pass them the clicker. Good evening. I just want to follow up in giving you what it looked like for us on the recreation side of the house. I would not be able to say it has, it was as successful as it was without the help of these fine folks next to me. Kimberly and James and the whole HR team really, really went above and beyond, and I could not tell you how, what a wonderful job they did. So thank you for, thank you for your support in getting this where we need it. So a couple of our main objectives in all of this conversation was really about recruitment, getting these candidates, so that Melanie and the athletic staff and all of our folks at Recreation are able to get the staff that we would like, as well as keeping them. Retention is always a challenge when you're working with part-time employees, but we want to keep them, we want to develop them, and then ultimately have sustainability and a quality workforce, so that the programs that we're putting out are going to be the programs that we want. These are people working with our kids, these are kids direct in line with our citizens, and it's really important, I think, for us, as well as I'm sure the city and council, that we are, we have got the best workforce out there. So I'm happy to say, we have done a lot of that. James alluded to a little bit of our, of our things that we did in getting people onboard. All of those hiring techniques worked. We were able to move several people onboard, but I think that it was important for people to get onto the city payroll and to have a really good experience from the very get-go. So the onboarding process, everything, it helps them feel like they're valued, that they're part of a bigger picture, and that when they come to the Recreation Department, they're able to put their best foot forward, because they realize that what a value that they're at. It also helps us with our consistency. It helps us provide effective training. When we don't have the turnover as, as staff did with the prototype, we were having challenges. All of her employees were focused on getting new people on, training them, getting new people on, maybe some people leaving, and the whole goal was to have a consistent and stable workforce, so that her folks can do a much more effective job with training and keeping folks. And then that lends into our development of them. We want all of our workforce, whether they're part-time or full-time, to feel like they have opportunities moving up, and they have opportunities that we're willing to invest in them, so that they'll ultimately stay with us for the long haul and have some sustainability. One of the things we do, regardless of whether they were a city or prototype with us in the past, is Melanie does a great job with providing an exit survey. So I have data from last year's exit survey to this year's exit survey, and I just want to point out that already you can see the difference and the increase in some of these numbers. So I won't point necessarily all of them out, but from 2019, which is the dark blue, to 2020, you can already tell that the staff are feeling a little bit better about when they came onboard for working with us. Conflict, these are what we do in our training prior to summer camp, as well as year-round. Conflict resolution or disciplinary problems with kids, how they work with parent interactions, and how are they prepared to even just provide some of the programs. I will just let you know too, this summer was unique. It was a challenge for us with COVID. Melanie was extremely challenged with all of the guidelines and just trying to make sure that the staff and the kids were safe. We maintained the same schedule of all of our programs. We didn't necessarily scale back. What we did do was scale back on our activities, our field trips, obviously all of our guidelines from CDC. But given all of the challenges, the staff still felt really good about where they're at. Because again, they didn't fill this out until they were about done for the summer. This was their experience. We have some room to grow on our communication. A lot of that does lend to some of our challenges with COVID, trying to keep up with those CDC guidelines and keeping everybody up, up to speed on what, what those things were, were, is one of our areas on communication. Camp structure, camp schedule, those are just indicative of, we didn't have any field trips, we didn't have any playgrounds, we really didn't have anything to do, but yet the staff still felt like it was a good summer. So again, I think that getting those folks onboard, having them through city payroll, having them through city umbrella, I think it really, makes a really great difference. And ultimately, what we want is sustainability and quality. I cannot tell you how important I feel that our frontline staff are prepared to meet with kids and to meet with those parents. I think they do a great job to train, but if they are constantly looking for the next job and the next position because of something else out there, I want to make sure that we maintain and sustain, so that we can ultimately give the best quality program. Melanie can also tell you that we already experienced a lot less absenteeism this year, and a lot less tardiness, because we did increase their pay rate. We were very happy to increase their pay rate, where people want to come to work for us, because they're, they're getting paid at a better rate, and we were much more competitive. Kudos to the analysis that HR did. We were much more competitive when it came to pay rates for part-time employees. Communication, organizational effectiveness, it's just easier for us to do emails when they're on city email. It's easier for us to see folks when they're on city, you know, communication guidelines. And ultimately, we want to foster a good culture and a teamwork. We want that to include all of our part-time, all of our temporary, whether you're a college student and you're just here for the summer, we want you to be able to come back next summer, which lends us to the next slide. So yeah, we asked them, would you like to come back next summer? And this is again, the dark blue is last year, and the light blue is this, is this year. And I'm happy to say that, I think we only had one person say that they would not be able to come back next year, and it was for other reasons that they weren't going to be here. So again, in the short timeframe that we implemented this, which was right before COVID started, to ultimately, just a few weeks ago, before schools started back up, I think it's been a great success, and I cannot thank you enough for your giving us the trust in implementing this, and to foster these folks, so that we really ultimately have the best program and the best, you know, recreation division out there with a great workforce. I'm happy to answer any questions. Melanie Marzett is our supervisor that oversees all of those programs and then several more, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I would like to also do, before you ask questions, you know, all of this has been presented from the statistical standpoint. Melanie is the one who actually works the programs every day, and I'd like for her to testify to you about how you feel this has been successful or otherwise. Please.
Well, I will say this, is that...
Thank you.
That when COVID began, from that time into the summer program, we were in a steady mode with the CDC guidelines. The transition from prototype to city payroll helped, because we didn't have to worry about training new people throughout the summer. We started off with our summer staff, our training, and that's the staff that we finished with. It made our summer less stressful. Our parents were happy, our participants were happy, and the staff was happy. So I do think HR for that, James did a good job when he came out initially just to see, you know, our numbers and, and our staffing issues, but that transition really helped ease the, the COVID situation. So I'm grateful for that.
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but just a, a thank you and a comment. Kimberly, thanks to you and your staff, you realized that recreation was your customer, and you just heard from your customer how satisfied they were with what you did for them. So I would say that you did a job, you and your staff did a job well done. Thank you for fostering a, a customer relationship that realized that, hey, we're, we're here to, to help other people in, in the city, so, so other, other staff, so, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. We appreciate those comments. It's interesting, because that's what we live on in, in HR. We believe that every single employee is our customer, because honestly, without them, we don't have a job. So we absolutely love our customers. We like to take good care of them.
They'll, they'll, they'll come back, they want to, they'll want to do some more business with you, so, so thank you for that.
COVID positions that we have to fill. We might have to raise, we might have to raise our fee, our consulting fee.
You're probably a little cheap.
Y'all have done a great job, despite what's going on around us and, you know, with the COVID and all, keeping the programs going, you know, as you have, so thank you.
And I got to say, I got to echo that, because you didn't know exactly what you were going to have to do when this stuff started happening.
Right.
And you were very fluid and, you know, first of all, I think a big was just helping the other employees that we have in the organization, in the city's organization, to be able to have a place for their children at first, and then segue into doing what we need to do for the larger community. So you all did a great job.
And we're pleased to say that neither any of our staff or our kids, you know, got sick, at least on our watch during the summer.
Yeah, we used to.
Sorry, not like during the summer. We were just really, you know, it, it was a challenge, and it was stressful for everybody, but the fact that we kept everybody safe is just a blessing, and we're thrilled that we are able to continue to offer programs and, and have the...
Would.
Thank you.
I also would like to say that my staff, they did a great job with COVID and making sure that the parents were aware of, because we, we followed the CDC guidelines, but we also exceeded. They also put out a video prior to the start of the summer day camp program. So my staff really worked hard and diligently to make sure that we had a productive summer.
Well, kudos to them.
Absolutely.
That's impressive.
Thank you very much for that presentation.
Right.
Good information.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, councilor brings us to our report section for the night, and I'm going to start with, who wants, I'm going to start with ladies first, Dr. Washington.
No comment, sir.
Mr. Ward.
Proud to be here, sir.
Proud to have you.
No report, thank you.
Couple of things from, from me. On Thursday, September 17th, 2020, the Daughters of the American Revolution recognized Constitution Week with a bell-ringing ceremony at the Freedom Fountain. I was pleased to issue a proclamation recognizing September 17th to the 23rd, 2020, as Constitution Week, in recognition of 200, of the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution by the Constitutional Convention. Tom Malum unexpectedly passed away in January of this year. His service and dedication to this community has been a labor of love, and he will be greatly missed. In recognition of his outstanding work with Kiwanis, in particular, helping to raise significant funds for children through the annual Kiwanis Chicken Fry fundraiser, and at the request of his family and friends, I've issued a proclamation naming October 2nd, 2020, as Tom Malum Chicken Fry Day in the city of Jacksonville. He sold a mini chicken ticket. And that's all I have. I'll go to you, Dr. Woodruff.
Mr. Attorney, do you have a report before I?
Okay. Several things. First of all, we would like to thank the council for the free ridership program, which you have had on the transit program. Your current authorization for the free ride extends or, or stops, that's the word I'm looking for, the end of this month.
for, the end of this month. We would recommend, because of funding that continues to come through FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, that the free ride program continue through Monday, January the 4th, 2021, basically an additional three months. If at that time we see that funds will allow, we may continue it further. But we would ask, will you authorize the free ride program on the transit through January 4th, 2021?
Yes.
Yes.
This is of the council, yes.
Second thing, tomorrow morning, Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m., we're going to be having a wonderful event that we have been looking forward to for literally years, and that is the official opening of the marina. We understand that a lot of public cannot get there because of various issues relative to restrictions on crowd size, but we do hope that you, as council members, if you do not have a conflict, that you can come down at 11 o'clock tomorrow morning. There'll be a brief ceremony, and we'll have the official launching of three or four kayaks. We could put y'all in a kayak if you would like, but at the same time, the mayor is going to host the official opening of the city's marina. That's, of course, down at Riverwalk Park in that area. So, if you don't know where the city marina is, you do know where Riverwalk Park is or where Sturgeon City is, it's on the waterfront in that area. The other thing that we would remind everyone is that when the county adopted their budget this year, they increased the tipping fees at the landfill. Those tipping fees go into effect, the new tonnage fees will move from $48 a ton to $55 a ton effective October 1st. We've heard of no action by the county that would postpone that. What that means is that if you are a customer of the city, you will see that fee go up, not because of the fee that the city collects or charges, but because of the tonnage fee that we're now having to increase to cover the landfill improvements. I do want the public to know, the landfill does need significant improvements. They have a five-year master plan, as we discussed back at budget time. That is something that the County Commission has approved. But every commercial and residential customer will see that pass-through fee go up. It will especially hit commercial garbage customers because it is based upon tonnage. And again, it goes from $48 a ton to $55 a ton. The next thing we would like to do is talk a moment about this past Friday night. Every year, Rolling Thunder does an excellent job with the issue of POW MIA. Because of the COVID-19, it was virtual. Glenn and his staff did an outstanding job, and we did have that event. But Rolling Thunder is always to be commended for the work they do to remind us all that freedom is not free, that people do wind up prisoners of war, that people do wind up missing in action, and unfortunately, many times, they're missing in action permanently. And to annually bring that to the attention of this community and the world and the United States citizens is important. But you can see, this is some of the virtual ceremony that occurred this past Friday night. The noted POW, I'm sorry, let me start that again. The Iraq War had a noted POW, Guy Hunter Jr. He was the keynote speaker, and the observance was, again, something that we hope we will do on an annual basis. It is led by Rolling Thunder. Well done. The 9/11 ceremony, as of 2018, as in 2018, weather forced the annual observance indoors. It occurred here in this chamber. It was well-attended, but stayed within the governor's guidelines. I know a number of people watched this on G10, and it has replays. As we finish that, people continue to ask about the Veterans Parade and the Christmas Parade. Both of those parades will be postponed, I'm sorry, they will not occur. They will simply be voided for this year. The governor's order, which could certainly change, currently prohibits parades. And as you can appreciate, if the governor changes his mind, it's very difficult at the last minute to arrange for a parade of that magnitude. So, Rolling Thunder, that has been the sponsor through the city of the Veterans Day Parade, that will not occur. What we do plan, though, is Glenn is going to play the video of the 2019 Veterans Parade. It will occur on Veterans Day, which is Wednesday, November 11th. So, it will be replayed many times on G10. I believe that's all the notes I have. I believe, I'm sorry.
Glenn's got to come back.
Yes, Glenn needs to come back in now for the census.
Mr. Carter, did you have any...
Thank you.
We have eight days left for it to get people counted in the census. This is what the self-response rates are for our community. Greenville is edging up a little bit, so we're nervous about that part. But this is what they just released this afternoon at 3:00 about what the households that have been reached by census workers and the census self-response rate. So, they are, they have touched this many houses. That doesn't necessarily mean they counted everybody in those houses. It means the census person has been to that house. They have to go to a house three times before they get a, you know, they can say, we've done enough on the matter, and then they do what's called a proxy, in which they go to the neighbors and say, how many people live in that house exactly? What do you know about them? And do things like that. Those people are not counted in redistricting because they're imputed into the numbers, they're added in. So, we only get credit in there for the actual count, but you do get the credit of that for the census count as it is at that time. Still time that you can do it if you want to. Go online and fill it out. There's still people doing it. Every public library, we took a tour of the county last month and made sure they're all got the information. They're great people, and they're ready to help people at that time. This is it, though. This is the end. If we assume that 92.5% of North Carolinians are counted, and that equally would be across the state, we're down now to only $274 million that we'd miss out on for the next decade as it was there. So, that's what we're in now. They have said that they've counted all the group quarters this afternoon. I didn't have time to update that. The number from the base is 18,000, the group quarters number at this time. That's a little bit less than what we had in 2010, even with the deployed numbers out there. So, it just, you know, it's when you hit things as it was there, but I think we'll be better. They started yesterday counting, or today, rather, counting the homeless population, and we have, hope they'll find some people in that thing, too. So, this is it. Comes September 30th, it's all over. It's worth $16,000 each person in federal funds alone, actually $16,230 per person for each one that comes in because those federal dollars that get handed out according to what population numbers they are, and then that's it. So, here we are. Thank you, Glenn. So, we have a one-city moment tonight.
I believe that the items that I covered with the POW observance and the 9/11, those were the one-city moments.
Sounds good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Is Mr.... He was... Good guy.